All right, everybody wouldn't mind standing before we open the meeting. We'll have prayer and pledge to the flag. Mr. Hoffman will lead us on the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head. Heavenly fathers, we gather here today, please make us always mindful of your guidance and your strength. Bless this board that we make the proper decisions in your eyes. Bless all present here today. Bless our wonderful staff. Keep our troops that are protecting us every day safe and help our country heal and move forward through Christ our Lord. Amen. All right, guys, it is now low block and we'll get the meeting going. First item of business is consent agenda, which consists of regular meeting minutes of November 3rd, workshop of November 10th, and a special meeting of November 10th. So if all had time to look over those and read those, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I need you to read in the form AP.
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney. At the November 3rd regular meeting of the City Commission, Commissioner Lowry filled out Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict with county municipal and other local public officers, most regards to the summer clients plat amendment. Has he had a relationship with the developer? That form will become part of the minutes for 11th through 20th.
Okay? Everybody hear that and understand that? If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, all three.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hoffman there, second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Lowery. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh. Okay, we're gonna move the city engineer report up to the spot of the city attorney right now. He's got another meeting he has to be at and so we'll let Mr. Back to come forward and go over the project updates.
I've got the plate out moving in.
Yes, sir.
Run through the projects. The first on the list are the north or north shore projects. The first one is Fort Ford. That's the one that we had the meeting on last week and decided to go have a discussion with the water management district on proposed alternatives, whether that's moving it to another portion of the city, closing off drainage basin like you talked about, looking at that area, or if there's a possibility that we could take funds, remaining funds of that and apply it to construction dollars within the stormwater master plan. I've got a couple of potential dates to meet with Brett Cypress from the water management district. I'm just waiting on confirmation when to be able to go over. Stormwater master plan, Jim has the draft report and the master map plan set right there. I didn't make seven copies because it's about this thick. We can get copies, but basically what you have out of that, the master map was the biggest portion, so the entire city system is mapped and it's shown within those drawings. The guts of the report are done. The remaining portions left of the report are basically the improvement recommendations and a watershed map. The watershed map was not something that we were gonna do originally, but it really needs to be done just to delineate the city into actual drainage basins. So we've got the recommended improvements and with those will be cost estimates on those recommended improvements. So that'll be our next step forward, but the draft plan is there. If more copies are desired, we can put some more package together and I can have them delivered down to the to the city where you can grab them and look at them. Port City Trail, still the same status. I do have a meeting with the county tomorrow, but Duke Energy, we're still waiting on the signed federal paperwork with Duke Energy. CBU Sewer, I talked with Spencer yesterday. They were headed over yesterday, mobilizing today, and the plan from what we're being told is to clean the camera this week through probably next Tuesday, and then they're gonna take the rest of the week off for the holidays. So it'll be cleaning the camera from the first week to week and a half. Long Avenue, working on preparation of the bid documents and we discussed before. Garrison Avenue is complete. We did provide a contract with a punch list last week and the punch list items were basically, we had two school signs with flashing demons on those, and those are just a long lead item that took longer to deliver. So when they come in, they'll install those. And there was two small sets of brick papers that were disturbed at two of the residences right down the street, I think address 2007 and 2009, and I asked them to fix the papers and they're supposed to be here one of the days this week, I think so in favor. But that job is ready to be closed out. The CBGR grant, we had our public hearing on the 10th, which most everyone was here for that. As far as we know, the submitter schedule for that is still next Monday, the 23rd, so we should be in and submitted according to the grant administrator. The part of that, we still have the downtown sewer improvements cost estimate from triant funds. Once we complete this, make sure that's what's right, we'll pull that estimate out of this CBGR grant because that was included part of that estimate. We'll provide just that cost for that when we put in for the triant fund. CBEAR is moving along, no issues. I did speak with Norman Raroon about taking a look at the boat ramp and giving us a proposal of making any repairs out there, damage that we might have through the season. So I'm expecting that anytime. I think the only other item that's not on the list, but it's on our list is NRCS, and I think that they have the letter for the additional work, but we haven't heard anything about it.
Yes, we have confirmation, yes.
So once they, once they approve our plan set, we'll be authorized to move forward and put that job out for bid. That's all we got.
Questions, anyone got a question? Josh, everything going on? A lot of the work that's going on and others, but that's what he's been ramrod and forced. Anybody? All right, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, we'll get back on the agenda, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, a couple of things on the agenda today. The first one being is ordinance 578, involved in Northport St. Joe overlay district. We need public comment and the vote to have a first reading.
Okay. Anyone here like to speak to the Northport St. Joe overlay project that Mr. Prier's been working on with the past group? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 578. Okay, motion by Mr. Ashbrook, second. Second by Mr. Langston. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh.
Ordinance number 578, ordinance amending the land development regulations with the city of Port St. Joe, specifically city initiated text and map amendment two, number one, created in Northport St. Joe makes use of overlay district, and number two, to amend the zoning map of the city, providing for sufferability, repealing all ordinance and conflict with and providing for an effective rate. All right, and the only other thing I had on the agenda, Mayor, was I know you wanted, the board wanted to speak to Mr. Hanlon, come in and explain a few things with regards to the link of terms and the fee to run for office. I believe Ms. Pierce, the clerk, made a phone call to Mr. Hanlon. He was unable to make it to this meeting, but I will follow up with him and see if I can't get him in here.
That's fine, that's fine with everyone else. We'll kick down the road and put it on.
And that's all I have?
Put it on the agenda, though, that he can attend. Okay, any questions? I do have a question. Our parking ordinance.
I will have something in front of the board at the next meeting.
Very good. Thanks, sir. All right, old business. Yeah?
Yes, sir, Mayor. First item that we have under old business is COVID-19. The city is still monitoring it. As you can see nationally, it's like we have a slight uptick in number of cases that we've seen nationally on there, so we're asking everybody to be safe. Holiday season approaching, social distancing, being the king.
Yeah, I think I'd like to remind everyone how quiet we were in the city when this thing first hit back, I don't know, several months, we were rocking along at zero in one case. Looked like we've been doing good for the last month or so, but it's all around us and it's gonna get back here again, so I would highly recommend and ask folks to wear their mask when they can, especially in crowded indoor places and places you can't do social distance. So continue following the CDC guidelines and I think we'll be fine here.
On the new business theme, today we have two development order requests in our new business. The first one is a development order for Arizona on Madison. This one actually received a favorable recommendation from the planning board at the last meeting on there. This development will consist of 84 units, and we have Mr. Jack Cousins here today representing the development. If you have any questions before we move forward on consideration of a development order.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Hudson or anyone else representing the group? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the development order and the parcel numbers are on your agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, it's a motion, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ashbrook. Discussion, anyone in the audience have any? Any board members? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh. Look forward to seeing things going. Great. Next one.
The next one is a development order request from the overlooked townhomes that also was due before the planning development review board with a favorable recommendation. This one will actually consist of 43 units in the city, so it's here for your consideration today. Mr. Hudson also represents the developer in this one.
All right. Any questions? Anybody? Okay, entertain a motion for the development order for the overlooked townhomes. Parcel numbers are listed in your agenda. So move. And that's from Mr. Ashbrook, second. Second, Mr. Lowery. Discussion, any discussion from the audience? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh. Look forward to all this and that going on. All righty, any more new business? Moving right along, we'll go to public works. Mr. Back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not get on the agenda today, water meter replacement. We began this program several years ago, we were hit by Hurricane Michael, so we wanted to resume that, that change out program, I think, I'm not sure exactly what came to pocket.
1,450 meters, was that what I saw?
That's correct.
Right, right. And for those that may not know, you want to explain a little bit about what's going on, how we got some bad reads and the need for spending this money?
Back in 2006, we converted our water meter over to AMR software, so it was automatic read. And where they stand now is the beginning to fail, and they have failed, which is why we kicked that program off three years ago. So ideally, we want to continue that. You know, we skipped two years, but currently there's 1,543 meters that aren't picking up. So what that means for the staff, essentially, they have to go out physically for these meters and read those, you know, from the cave all the way over. So it's a big area, so we're just trying to get it back in line with what we originally set to do in 2006 and to gather that data like John.
John, are all the city meters AMR?
Not all.
Okay, because I know our first tranche was to try to swap out everything in the city limits.
And we didn't have enough funding, you know, three years ago to complete that. So we've got, if you look at the sheets, I'm not sure if Jim provided it or if you ever checked.
I've got one here.
So if you look geographically, you know, basically to what areas of our routes are experiencing the most failure. So we know we have limited quantity. That's the minimal. We expect that number to go up. Right now, we've got our supplier negotiating installing, so that number's not gonna go down. It might very well go up, and that's what I expect to happen.
What part of it, the install?
The install.
Go up?
Correct. No, the install to come down. The number needed to put down will go up.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So we are voting for this purchase. So what are we voting on, 1,450 or what?
Well, you know, honestly, the budgetary amount that we have is $321,000.
Right.
And I think that to me would be the vote to include the 1,450 and potentially, you know, the additional based on the negotiation we.
Right, right. How the meter price for this big purchase compared to the last big purchase?
A hundred dollars less. Well, no, no, from a regular purchase, it's about a hundred dollars less. And I'm about six right now.
Okay.
So that's comparable to what we purchased three years ago.
Okay, well, that's good.
Who installs them?
Well, last time we used a contract that we'd used before, and it went atrociously wrong, to say the least. So we won't be using that guy. This is a contract that consolidated pipe and supply wire, and we'll hold them accountable for that.
Okay, so your workers are not tasked with doing all of this? That was my only concern.
And one of the most important parts of this quarter, Jim, is them reporting all the meter numbers to our staff so they can enter it in the ministry system. So that's, that's number one for us.
It is, and one of the things I spoke to the supplier about yesterday in fact, was the installer he's looking at, he feels like he's got the ability to take that data where it had to be manually inputted a year ago, that we can electronically transfer that. So it takes even more work off the lady in the city hall.
Yeah.
So that's what we're shooting for.
You'd think this time that that would be available.
You would think.
All right, good deal. Any questions for John in this particular budgetary item?
Is this the last tranche before, or is this gonna get rid of all of the old meters?
No.
When do we expect to see another invoice like this, or should we just use some insurance money today and go ahead and replace all of the old meters?
Well, we tried to set it up on a three or four-year plan. Let me take this off.
Okay, how much money do you want to spend? I'm just thinking about the time savings of staff having to go out and read an addition to 500 meters that don't work. If you go ahead and replace these today, you're saving those man hours too.
How much money will we lose with bad meters?
Yep.
Well, there's still registering, there's not getting that.
I'm still leaning towards, let's use the difference with insurance funds to cover the cost of replacing all the bad meters. Kind of our responsibility to make sure we're accurately reading the water meters.
How many would be left if we purchased the 14 and changed?
You would have another $200, bro.
Ooh. I like that.
Yeah, I was thinking a couple hundred. So we still got a long way to go.
One thing to remember, there still are being accurately read, it just has to be read manually. So we're trying to get away from that and having to use all the manpower to go in and read them. So everybody's meters are still being read, they're still getting accurate reading, but we can't ride by and read them with the truck right now, so good chance we want to replace them immediately, fast, quickly.
And the downside is that these meters have a shelf life, basically, so some of the new ones we put in whenever may start failing. Who knows? So I guess there's no guarantee on these meters as far as.
There are not. They still have the, you know, the 10-year warranty.
Yep.
You know, which is, you know, the ones we want to replace are obviously well outside that. So there's a 20-year life expectancy on the battery, so we're, we're getting close to some of those.
Okay, all right. Okey-dokey, anybody else got questions? All right, motion by Mr. Ashbrook to go out and purchase, not bid, but purchase, because this is a sole source supplier, and spend $321,000 on meter replacements. I want to put a number, we hope maybe we'll get a few more, but.
We should, yeah.
All right. Second. Second, Commissioner Langston. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh. When do we get this?
I'm gonna have to talk to the supplier and see. Obviously, we're hoping as soon as possible. Realistically, I would be surprised if it was, you know, probably January. That's.
Okay. That would start.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any question? Any more questions? I have some for John. Oh, two things. Our design files built from Dunbar. We're all the way on that.
We have some that Clay sent me.
Right.
You've still got information missing, so it's still an issue of being able to sit down and compile that and get that information back to Dunbar. They're probably 85%.
Okay.
You know, but we just need to make sure we include everything.
Yeah. Do you need help with that? I mean, someone to, are you the only one?
Honestly, yeah, it's just, you gotta find that information.
Okay.
But we'll work on that and try to make sure that we have it done by the end.
Okay. The other thing I have for John and the board for that matter, when Clay Smallwood was here, we engineered piping that hitch that runs parallel on that solar drive. The candidates won't work with us, they decided they couldn't. And so we, and I don't, of course, we need Josh here to help a little bit on that, and I don't know how, exactly how it's engineered, but we've got enough pipe laying on the ground around that we could do it, put some pipe in there, all we'd have to pay for is it's covered in some dirt. And we've got, Kevin's got pipe on his place, it's surplus, pretty much. Don's got some, I remember, right? If we look at that, it can't cost that much. We've got an excavator, we need to dig some, so we've got the manpower and we've got the materials and the equipment. Why don't we, you know, it's just another one of these things, we got pushed back for some reason. We can get it done, finish that project down there, slick that property off.
And if I could, Mayor, Josh and I would have a brief conversation about that.
Yep.
If we could let Josh and I continue that conversation. We do have the core permit and.
Yep. I'm not looking for a motion today, I'm just putting it out there so you and Josh can keep talking and come back to us with something that we might could do to help the city and not spend a lot of money.
It's only two minutes, so, yeah. So, but we just need to really think about what we want to look at, because the permit is going in the first day.
Oh, that's even better. That means we can do what we want, right?
No, no, we just need to know what we wanted. I don't think that was the driver of the permit, it was just to get the permit.
Okay, good thing. All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it, John. All right, surface water planning. Come on up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, on the agenda, I need the board's approval to advertise, because we really have a clarify of a month or two. We're definitely in the budget this year to have those clarifiers painted. I just need Josh to produce that.
Okay. Everybody understand what we need, what you want?
Finish this project.
Entertain the motion. Second. Make the motion there, second, Mr. Ashbrook. Any discussion, any questions, Claire? All in favor, aye. Those same sign, motion passed five and oh.
That's all I have on this question.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
Yes, sir.
You polished, you need any?
We're good.
Oh, you polished that?
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're kind of excited, tomorrow we're gonna do the pipe work on the pond. Something we've been, after Sally, you went, we got all that water, we tried to just pond it down far up through the pipe work, so we got training scheduled, pipes built, so we're gonna get that in tomorrow. So that's, we discharged every day from then till now, and we got the pond down to three feet, so we're in good shape.
Great.
So we're probably not discharged in December. We still got the pump that's out, so we left the last piece of that, so I've got pieces and parts trying to get from there here, so we get our stuff together. We should have everything back together in December, everything should be back to a looking discharge, which means probably a January discharge. Unless some, yeah, my child is just sort of something new. That's kind of the big news from what we got over there. So you got questions?
How about your staff?
Your full staff? Well, me, I'm stealing the guy from John, I'm gonna steal Matt and I. So Matt and John's figured out a timing so we can transfer him over, which, it leaves John a set of hands, a set of good hands short, so hoping that he will find a placement. I think it's, for us, it's a, it's good for Matt and it's good for us.
He'd be an operator too, starting improvising.
He'll start as an operator trainee and then work his way up through operations being an operator, which is best for me, instead of operating.
So that means that John's group is about to advertise an opening?
Yes, I would imagine so. That's correct. What I'm doing, water? Water. But he's gonna, Matt's gonna take some time, first of December, to train, to finish training the guy that's gonna be doing his jobs. I know they're gonna be shorthanded.
They're shorthanded now.
Yes.
That's why I asked the question. If you're gonna take it from John's group, we need to be prepared to advertise and hire that one person if not two.
I'm not sure how short of a pan John is, but I'm really sure.
Compared to you and Larry, he's really short. I'll just throw that out there.
And, you know, the group's been working out. I'm proud to see the city working together as well as it is. You know, we got problems on the pad and board stuff, and John, I mean, all that's working.
One, one should work.
Yeah. Happy to be right where we are.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right, Mike?
Mayor, I don't have an update on FEMA, but I do have an update on the tennis court lighting. We did receive two written proposals from the tennis court contractors to lighting of the courts at the Lamar face, and they were both well above our budget amount. So John and I have talked about contacting some local electricians and seeing if we can't put together a different proposal to try to light those courts more effectively. So we have a, I have a scheduled meeting today with one of those contractors and we'll see if we can't come up with another way to more affordably light those tennis courts.
I got a question. Is that just paying them the labor or?
No.
Don't we got, did we have lights donated?
We had some lights, but in discussion and review of those lights, it became apparent that they weren't, they were gonna be problematic. They weren't LED lights, and then the maintenance and the energy consumption were a concern, and we just felt like if we're gonna do this, we should put the LED lights in for those two reasons. So that's why, when the proposals from the tennis court contractors came back so high, we tried to re-engineer that project so we can try to find a more affordable way to put those lights up.
That's probably why they replaced them, the school.
Yeah, and the school had lights too, but they recommended that we not use those, that we go with newer LED lights.
Okay. Question you might, Mike, if you could. Okay, let's move on with the check off city engineer. And we're in code enforcement. Jim, you wanna make a report on that?
Yes, sir. Code enforcement is moving along nicely. We have scheduled hearings monthly, there's another one scheduled for tonight, so we're asking people in town to please work with code enforcement. We got probably about 5% are complying with what we are actually asking for people, so that really saves time and money for the city to not have to get involved in code enforcement issues, so we're asking people to please work with staff, to. So, we're asking people to police work with, with staff to try to, uh, make sure we take care of the problem inside the beautiful town after Hurricane Michael.
Looking a lot better, I get a lot of compliments on how far we've come. We've got, uh, six before the, uh, special master, so they're, they're working on it. If we can afford to, to do what we can do, so much. All righty, uh, police department chief?
I don't have anything, if anybody's got any question.
I've got one for you, chief, if that's okay, Mr. Ryan. Uh, it seems to be cyclical, but we've got once a year we get calls about speeders. Um, Garrison Avenue is turning into a little mini interstate.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know what your thoughts would be on that, maybe additional patrols? Or I haven't thought about potentially, you know, if you go from seventy-one all the way to twenty, there's not a stop sign in sight, people are using that like an expressway because it's quicker. If we placed a stop sign at maybe tenth and sixteenth street, I think that would help a lot. I just wanted to open that up, kind of get some thoughts on it.
I think the, the major problem is speeding, and if you looked at it, if you go back and look at our records, we've only had one accident on Garrison Avenue. So, I don't think the safety concerns are there as far as having to put up more stop signs or whatever to, uh, slow people down. We've, uh, upped the enforcement on Garrison, I think we wrote about sixteen citations on Garrison.
In the last month, too.
Yeah. And, uh, between there and Avenue A, and this week, we're working on Monument Avenue a little bit.
Don't give away all your secrets, they don't need to know ahead of time.
I, 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 I don't want, I don't want to write people tickets, I don't want to be able to slow down. That, that's, that's the goal, is get people to slow down. I actually think Monument's worse than Garrison. The, the problem with Garrison is there's so much traffic on Garrison. Now, if you compare the traffic on Garrison now to what was there five, ten years ago, and Garrison Avenue is a busy street now. I mean, it's like ninety-eight down there most of the day. Uh, after our last meeting, we talked about speeders before, I bought some, uh, purchased some equipment that'll be here in December that's gonna help us gather some data, uh, when we do get complaints on these streets in Garrison. Between Garrison and Seventh Street and Avenue A, that's gonna be the first places I put it up. And, uh, it'll be able to gather data continuously for several days at a time and we'll be able to compare and see what's actually happening. I mean, my guys are out there, they're out there in the market unit, and they're not gonna see nearly as much as you would see sitting on the front porch with no police car out there. Cause, uh, you can see our patrol cars from a mile away.
Officers never see people speed. We don't speed around.
Right. So, but, uh, I mean, some, some of the thing, I mean, I've talked to people on Seventh Street, and they say there's people going forty, fifty miles an hour down Seventh Street, and that's, that's getting it for that block. Yeah, and, and, you know, there's nice holes on that street too, so, I don't know. But we'll see when, when the data collector gets here and we put it up, I mean, people won't even know it's there, so.
Well, it's not, not one of the things to say. Speed is this.
Okay.
It looks like, uh, table box on the pole.
They just record speeds and put it on a disk?
Yep, it records every bit of that at times, uh, the speed, you know, when the busy time's on the street, the traffic is, it records every one. So, and we're, we're gonna continue doing the enforcement. And, uh, I think we wrote sixteen citations out of eighty-nine traffic stops. That's total traffic stops in the city. So, we're not just out there writing people tickets, you know, only the people that really deserve them, I guess.
Well, Garrison just got paved, and I mean, it's traffic from Franklin County going to the north end.
You know. I've had complaints of big trucks coming through, and mostly what we've seen is delivery trucks or construction sites and stuff, not really stuff coming from ninety-eight to seventy-one. It's, it's just, you know, they're, they're doing some logging down on, uh, the cemetery, by the cemetery down there. So, every now and then one of those drivers try to head out, but we've been trying to crack down on that too, all through trucks.
And I think we can, we can still look at your stop sign proposal, I'm, I'm not sure I favor the two, the additional stops with one, Mike.
My only thought on that, Mayor, was it would be less of a throughway. If you know you can save time getting that, but that's, you're gonna save time, but if it's two additional stops, you may as go on down to ninety-eight.
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I understand about Garrison, but we don't put some stop signs up.
Another can of worms.
Avenue A, I'm talking about, you're talking about seventy-one to ninety-eight. They come, they're gonna send eight miles an hour sometime. The police have been out, you know, and they return sometimes, but, you know, they can't stay there.
Can't be on one road all day.
So, you know, when they don't see them, they're, I'm talking, they punch them, you know, so. It's just some things that, um, I think the, with the equipment that you get, it'll be a big step toward the right direction as far as the time now.
Yeah, we'll be able to narrow down times that we need to be there, you know, the busy time. It'll be, it'll be better.
Yeah, I'm not just sitting down on that.
I wouldn't want to make any decisions on traffic control devices until we have a research.
And once, once we have that and somebody, the public really brings their phone off the, we say, well, here's.
Here's the data.
Yeah, we've been working with John's crew too, we put up some new signs on Avenue A, put some new signs on Monument. Of course, there's already new signs from the Nardigras home, uh, Garrison. But from what I've seen, I mean, Garrison Avenue seems to slow down quite a bit. I mean, I bet a lot of people come up to me in the public too, say that, uh, it seems to have been. But, uh, when we're not there is what I'm going to underestimate and say.
I hadn't had any calls in a while, but I did get a call today. But I, I.
I get it, but most of them.
You did, same person. Yeah, I think so. But I, I mean, I, I sympathize, I mean, we do have a problem at times, and, you know, the calls that I get are near misses at the mailbox, you know?
Right.
And I, I think, you know, you have speeding on every road.
Yeah.
I think at some point in time, we're probably all guilty of it. But, uh, I think it's the increase of, of traffic on Garrison that's really making the difference on Garrison Avenue. And Avenue A's always been one of the busiest streets in town because it's cut through too.
And we just voted to increase by eighty-eight houses, the traffic that's gonna be going on Garrison too, so it's only gonna get worse.
It is, absolutely.
Yep. All right, any other questions for the chief? Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Pierce, Christmas on the coast.
Moving forward, people calling daily wanting to enter an operating. We've had very few say they couldn't from years past, but seems to be moving and very positive and people looking forward to it.
Very good, great. Any questions for Ms. Pierce? All righty, citizens be heard, anybody in the audience like to come forward? Nope. Here in town, uh, last week, I started with, oh, wait, you got one coming, okay.
It's law motion.
Come right up, yeah.
All right. Good afternoon. Lisa Matthews, three twelve, Avenue F. And I know you've heard this a thousand times about the bears, but now the bears are getting on my neighborhood now. I'm hearing this, they're now, they're right across the street from me. She moved, uh, backyard and my front yard. So, are we gonna do anything at all about it, or are we just gonna wait and see, or what?
They are, they're on the prowl, uh, uh, they're, they're all over the city. I saw some trash cans of mud somewhere in the city, I don't remember where it was this week, but, but, uh, it wasn't in Northport, so, uh, I think we had discussions, uh, two weeks or a month ago, I mean. Yeah, and I, I, I'll be perfectly honest and, and, you know, I plead, I plead guilty. I, I dropped the ball as far as writing that letter to FWC and, uh, busting at them a little bit, but I will, I will assure y'all, I'll get Ms. Pierce, uh, and Jim, you have.
Mayor, I think a few of them went on vacation over the last couple of weeks, they started putting a couple of trash out, maybe?
They did, they started putting a couple of traps out.
I think they're a case of relief.
Uh, also, I've been in contact with the local lieutenant over at FWC.
Yep.
He's setting up a class for us. I have some officers that are not certified to do what they call hazing of bears.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, FWC's actually, we talked about, they're going to, uh, give us a few non-lethal shotguns for hazing of bears, for basically rubber bullets. And, uh, the whole, the whole thing is to make them scared of people and scared to come in the neighborhood.
Right.
So, right now, when somebody calls, we go over there and look at them and say, yep, there's a bear. Once, once we get our guys certified and those shotguns, we'll be able to go over and scare the bear.
Okay.
And, you know, just do enough to make him not want to come back, hopefully.
Okay.
Okay. I was reading, he had, uh, uh, permission with fee, the month off, and the length of term. Is that gonna go on a ballot?
Uh, we're gonna discuss that when, uh, supervisor legend Hammond comes before so we can pick his brand about. We haven't voted, uh, to, to do any of that. We, we need to get his knowledge as far as, but just what we can do. We do know that, that there was a discussion about increasing the terms from two to four years a while back, but that's the city charter and it'll have to be on a ballot to make that change. The other part, the fee will not have to be on the ballot, but the length of terms will.
Yeah, because that's all it out, that's the county. But if you get so many signatures, you, uh.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We, what, what our discussion was, we need to determine a fair percentage to, to, you know, five percent of our small numbers is not fair, but so, so we, we got to talk to him about that.
All right.
So, it's coming.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? I see, uh, Mr. George Davis out there, and it reminded me to ask John Grantman. John, could you take a look at the flagpole at the Washington Gym area? This is the one that's to the entrance to the workforce where they park. It's, it's not the one that the flag's on now, it's all the way across the field, right in the, in that oak tree. There's an oak tree there, that was the old original, uh, flagpole for, for Washington High. And, and his group would like to see if we can somehow get that restored, renovated. They'd like to put American flag, their school flag, that type thing on there, state flag. And, uh, so where it is now, there's not a lot of choices as far as do we cut that tree down cause it's, the tree's drawn into it. So, you and mine, just take a look at that, get back to me, and I can, I can talk to him and his group about that. All right, anybody else? All right, Commissioner Ashbrook?
Uh, got very little today. Um, but I just did want to bring up, and this isn't something we have to deal with today, next year, possibly the next, uh, but because of Amendment Two passing, we gotta start thinking about our employee pay. Um, we've got a couple of options. By twenty twenty-three, the requirement will be that our minimum wage is thirteen dollars an hour, which is what we're starting now. So, our decision next budget cycle should be, do we want to start taking small bites out of that now or are we gonna wait until we have to jump up all at once? Uh, just to put it in perspective, there's a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand hours annually worked in the city. So, we're talking about even a, a dollar an hour raise, we're looking at that much.
Right.
And so, we've got to come up, two whole dollars, that's two hundred and fifty grand, that the city's gonna have to pay more by twenty twenty-five, yes, by twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I think, uh, Mike and Jim, uh, you guys need to start thinking about if we, do we want to put a line item in the budget for that?
And my, my thoughts were, Mayor, over the next four years, if we did a fifty cent raise across the board for every employee or brought that into the COLA, we would still be on track to meet it when we need to be there, but.
That's all I have, Mr. Ashbrook.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the only thing, I had, uh, Commissioner Quinn had mentioned that they were putting in, uh, the CDBGDR grant, uh, for Washington Gym for half a million dollars. But I, I believe someone called about the county about, uh, the restrooms on the exterior. Was there, you know, and it may be a downtown redevelopment question, but was, did we have a grant from TDC or what was the plan on that, funding that register?
It was in agreement with Commissioner Quinn, I think, just between Commissioner Quinn and the county.
Well, yeah, we had the money budgeted, uh, it was seventy-five thousand dollars in the DRA actual budget.
Still there?
I thought that was covered. I don't think there was any grant to it.
There wasn't a grant, it was a match.
I remember, I, I just remember the number of seventy, seventy-five.
You did say you were gonna help, but, uh, we had it covered already, and he said anything extra that we needed, you know, it would help. And, um, I talked with him about that, that, um, the grant that he's supposed to submit. And he, um, asked if we just hold off on it for a minute?
Hold off on, uh.
That, uh, and, um, and we put, he said, just the money that we have, you know, we can put it with whatever they get and we work together on, on the Washington High. Uh, so, it's up to the commissioners whatever, um, we decide to do with that, but, um, that, I, I just, I talked to him.
The only issue with that, um, is just what I heard just recent, like, a couple hours ago is that grant will not fund anything exterior.
See, I, I talked to him yesterday, I didn't know if I'm ready.
Yeah.
So, we need to go ahead and move on the bathroom.
Well, the, my only thought is, it's been engineered and, and we got the money in the budget and, and if, it's a big if, they get that grant to, to, to help us, that still won't be for another year if we get the money, we got the money now.
Yeah, and this is, this is just, when I say exterior, the building.
Yeah.
Anything on the grounds, it's not gonna cover, so I, I would recommend.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, we got the money, yeah. Yeah, I think we.
It was my understanding that through the whole process of talking about the bathroom and doing the bathroom, the city was going to commit, budget a hundred thousand dollars, and the county had agreed to match the hundred thousand. That's what my recollection was. But I, I think this is a good example of why it's so important that we start documenting these agreements. So, cause it, things change a little bit at a time, it may have ended up at seventy-five, uh, on each side, but there was definitely a commitment, and I'm not sure where the county was talking about getting the funding, if it was TDC money or not, but, uh, I, I feel certain that they were going to match the city and help build that bathroom.
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, and, and, and you're right, we need to start having a little email back forth or something like that, uh, but, uh.
And it was also mentioned too that we're going, them, uh, applying for that grant will have to have an interloper too, so.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
Might as well start.
The city, the city property.
Can the city apply for the grant on the city's behalf?
Yeah, we could've.
Yeah.
We had a scope and all that, but I think since it was in his district, Commissioner Quinn, go ahead. Anyway, we're just trying to get some clarification on that, cause I was asking about it, yeah, on the bathroom.
Uh, Bill, Bill Kennedy is, is on board with the city now, I understand, and I'm gonna start asking him when we come to our meeting, so as a project manager, he can give us a report. He, he was here today, he could answer a lot of his questions, a lot clearer than, than, uh, we have questions, but anyway. Uh, anyway, we can get some proven city in, anyway, I think we're all for that.
That's all I, all we got, Commissioner Langston?
Um, excuse me. Can we get the lights on at FEMA Park? Say around the check, if they're not, um, not working, can we get them, uh, she was gonna, uh, cost to get them, get them re-dead and, and take, uh, inside the, uh, the basketball court, outside basketball court, I think there's some, some bugs, um. the basketball court, outside basketball court, I think there's some, some bugs, um, going out there and just around the softball field. I think it's a good time to go ahead and check those things before, uh, summer. Make sure everything working properly, make it, make it more active out there then. But we go ahead and get those things checked and, and, uh, and fix them if any can be fixed.
Commissioner Langson, those actually, the softball pit have all been replaced. We're waiting on big game. Do you want to come back on?
They're, they're energized it for us.
Yeah, they're all brand new, actually.
That is correct, and we've got four till cemeteries complete and the ball field. And between us and Chris, we just can't get through, stick a meter in it. But we're still working.
But I will check those under the basketball court, see if any of those are around, too. Most of that stuff, you know?
Yeah, I think we may, may turn up heat on Duke a little bit, and they're dragging their feet. We've still got one light out on the, on the promenade there, vault cell, that's never worked since they put it in. One of those flat, one of those fancy lights. And then, of course, our walking path debacle, all they got to do is sign a piece of paper, we've been living on it. So if we need to talk to, were you going to talk to them?
Well, I, I left Jim's office, and I was, I was going to call him, and I'd never called him, but...
Which way? We can all call him.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to...
If you want to get together and let's...
He did that, so, yeah, that's, uh...
They have to put their, his phone number on our webpage. And ask the little citizens to start calling them and reminding them that we've been waiting for over three years to get these lights put up on that little piece of walk-in track.
Right, right. So, hopefully they'll have.
Yes, sir. Um, the lights, um, from Bigwood Department, where she has kept the bus. It's a reminder, we discussed that, that, um, we've called, we've been so much.
We need light, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're kissing the bus, the bus stop, yeah.
And we got that?
Yes, sir. We, we need to evaluate and see exactly, uh, what works.
So, uh, John, or Jim, want to get with Commissioner Langson, if you will, make sure you make note of the area he's talking about. Anything else, Commissioner? Alright, Mr. Hoffman?
I have just a couple of things. One, I want to, um, make sure that everyone's prepared for moving forward with the, uh, bathroom project at Washington Gym. We don't need to get bogged down in that again, so, uh... The other item is, I wanted to ask our attorney, uh, and Jim, you may weigh in on this. When does the agreement with the Saint Joe Corporation expire in reference to the city having the ability to use, utilize the city on bulkhead there at Marina? If you'll remember, I was opposed to entering into any kind of agreement to ask a company if we can utilize our own land, but, uh, we went into an agreement. I refuse to call it a lease, but when will that expire? And currently, how many folks are under a lease with the city to dock there?
I think it expires in a year, I need to look at this last approach, um, we had three.
That are actually paying currently?
Yeah, the last one, I don't know if he's still under that or not.
He is. I talked to him and sent him the first bill for October. He said he was going to continue to pay. But my recollection is December thirty-first on that agreement as well.
Yeah, this, this, this is a year.
That's what, that's what I was saying. I spoke to one of the, uh, boat owners yesterday, and they're, you know, wondering what the future holds. And I conveyed to that particular captain that my opinion has not changed at all. I would ask that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I bring it up to, to start some discussion, and, uh, we need to start thinking about it. My recommendation, once again, will be that we do not enter to, into an agreement with the Saint Joe Corporation. And that if we decide as a city to move forward and lease a portion of that bulkhead that we all know we own, instead of doing it in particular boat numbers, you know, we kicked around that idea up to five, I believe. But I think now, looking back at that, it's probably too many. So, I would support the idea of the ones that are currently paying the city and under a lease agreement with the city, that they would be the ones that we, uh, continue the lease program with them. And, uh, that way we would know exactly how many feet of, uh, bulkhead we're willing to use for the boats. And then you have plenty of room there left over for the ones that enjoy fishing, you know, the bulkhead or cast netting, whatever. So if someone would touch base with, I guess, Saint Joe and find out what their feelings are about, uh, the city moving forward. But irregardless, I'm going to make the motion that we move forward in the upcoming year and continues to utilize the city on bulkhead.
Let me throw something after you, Commissioner Hoffman, on that. I talked to one of the boat owners, too, where he, we talked together. And he asked, he knew it's December, and I said, well, why don't we just let that dog lay? And, and keep, keep your boat there. If Saint Joe Company come to us, we'll start talking to them. But I, I don't, I would rather we not rattle their cage. They got enough going on. I've got feelings. They don't even think about it. They're not even think about it. And I was just, it might be easier for us to just stay there till they say, well, you know, we had an agreement, you need to leave, leave, so then we can get into, let's talk again and see, see if we can come to terms. That, that's kind of, would you consider that?
And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. And that brings up the very reason I was adamantly opposed to the agreement in the first place. Because when you sign into an agreement and that agreement ends, you give them the ability to argue, well, the agreement's over.
Yeah.
You got to go. We don't have an agreement, but, you know, that's watering the bridge.
Well, it sounds like what we could do is, is, I mean, we'll see the board, we just continue on with the bucket as long as the people are continuing to secure their spot on there, we'll let a dog, a dead horse lie.
Yeah. Mr. Attorney, you okay with us, uh, ask forgiveness instead of permission?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'd rather do the same. I don't feel like getting in all that discussion again. That was, that was a rough two months.
Yeah, it was, so, and hopefully, hopefully they, uh, they'll be a little friendlier if it comes up. But we'll just...
Mayor, the one step we can take now is, is really digging into the legality of it, you know? Uh, there's no disputing, that's our land.
Yeah, yeah.
The dispute is, are we encroaching on their water land?
That's correct, yeah.
We need to make sure we have legs to stand on, but...
Yeah, I've actually done a lot of that research, and, and utilize the knowledge of a local attorney, who had done far more than me. And, uh, that's why I'm very confident in, in my feelings towards who owns the access. The bottom's a whole nother story.
Right.
That's why I think we should utilize floating docks.
Yeah.
And not touch the bottom. I, I, I can see that they own the bottom, but they don't own the water.
Alright, so what else you got?
That's all I got.
That's all, okay. I've got one thing. It's, it's a good news thing. Later dated November sixth, uh, here, uh, Mayor Resett Northwest Florida League of Cities consists of cities within the sixteen Northwest counties stretching from Jefferson County to Escambia County and the Florida Panhandle. And blah, 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 it works, you know, with everything, but, but in, uh, it said that it's my pleasure to present you with Northwest Florida League of Cities Gene Wright Municipal Resilience Award for 2020. On behalf of our board of directors and entire membership, I want to personally thank you for your membership, your leadership, and the personal sacrifice you have made during these unprecedented times. And it goes on and signed by Mayor Bob Campbell of the Kenex Springs. He's president. So, thanks to staff and board and everybody else, uh, we got a, uh, we got a nice award from Northwest Florida League of Cities. So I'll pass that on to Ms. Charlotte, and, uh, they display it somewhere, uh, in City Hall. And that is all I have. So, nothing else, uh, we'll stand, John.